Can we have a motion to adopt the agenda? Moved by the Honorable Vice Chair Dustin Hillis, seconded by the Honorable Ishay Collins. Mr. Overton, please open the vote.
Vote is open. Vote is closed, four yays, zero nays. The agenda is adopted.
Can we have a motion to approve the minutes? Moved by the Honorable Ishay Collins, seconded by the Honorable Vice Chair Dustin Hillis. Please open the vote.
Vote is open. Vote is closed, four yays, zero nays. The minutes have been adopted.
We are now to the public comment section of our agenda. First speaker, Ms. Kay Marie Presley.
Good afternoon. Is it two minutes or three minutes? I just want to make sure.
Three minutes.
Okay. Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Kay Marie Presley. It's Kay for short. It's Katie and Presley. I am here at this committee meeting because of an incident which happened to me in Fulton County, Georgia. This happened with the Solicitor General's Office. There was an incident on March the 3rd, 2024, where I was in a park up the street with my grandson and I was alerted by my son, which is his dad, to run home because there was a report that I had kidnapped my grandson. I had burglarized my home, my own, my son's home, and I was on the run. I eventually got home with my grandson, I'm going to abbreviate it. And at the time when I got home on March 3rd, 2024, I stood in, I stayed in my living room waiting for the 911 officers to arrive. I called at the time because I didn't know what to do. I was trying to call my grandson. I called Major Hinton of the Fulton County Police Department under Sheriff Labatt. And I was speaking to her. As I was speaking to her, the collaborators of the crime were speaking on their cellphones and informing each other that they should, when the police arrived, that they should state that the officer was flagged down. I'm here because I took this matter to the Fulton County Solicitor General's Office and its Deputy Director Lamar Rhodes. And what I have found, that the case was despite all the evidence of a presence of a police officer who did not have a warrant or a reason to be there or was not flagged down. The case was covered up by Mr. Lamar Rhodes and his refusal to investigate who the officer was, find out who the officer's badge number, and also a dismissal of the case. The case number is Case 24CR006970H. I am the victim and I am the grandmother. I look at the reason why I was here the last time, to celebrate the life of Cornelius Taylor. And he's a victim that is no longer here. I look at my own life. That officer entered my home, the home of my son, with a loaded gun, with his hand on his gun. He did not identify himself. He only told me to step outside. Officer, Ms. Major Hinton, who was on the phone at the time, asked me to hand my cellphone to the officer. After speaking to the officer, the officer went outside with my personal cellphone and returned and said nothing and left the residence. It is a serious crime of accountability that needs to be opened and not dismissed. It is a serious crime, which I asked the City Council and members of the Police Department, including the Justice Department, which I have sent a full-page package to investigate the conduct and the criminal activity and imprisonment of a 62-year-old grandmother. Thank you very much.
Next speaker, Ms. Henri Jordan.
Give it down to the Spirit of God, everyone that is here. While they promised them liberty, they themselves are the servants of corruption, for whom a man is overcome of the same as he brought in bondage. 2 Peter 2:19 verse. False teachers are further called servants of corruption because despite their profession of salvation, they become entangled in the world and overcome by it. James Griffiths have sold his soul unto Satan for corrupt money. Riches profit not in the day of wrath, but righteousness delivered from death. 5:11, Chapter 4, 1. Possession of money will not pardon you from God's rage, so that obedience to Him gives life. Submission to Jesus Christ created income. If I obey you, then the income will not be created. And everyone that hears these sayings of mine and doeth them not should be likened to a foolish man which built a house upon the sand. St. Matthew 7, Chapter 26, verse. On the basis of all that he has taught and illustrated, he concluded that all who boast here and do his sin shall be saved. Let us seek for the power to obey Jesus is the real power. Behold, I will send you Elijah the prophet before the coming of the coming of the great and dreadful day of the Lord. Malachi 4:5, verse. Moses represents the law and Elijah represents the prophets. Both of them appeared at the transfiguration of Christ. We need the power to obey Jesus for our protection against the enemy. Christ's power is greater than anybody's power. That's when we need to obey Him. Thank you and obey Jesus. We Christ like men and women.
Next speaker, Walter Reeves.
Walter Reeves, Workers' Representative. I would like to give you an update on the courtroom of Judge Cassandra Kirk. Last week, Fulton County Chair Rob Pitts pledged to hire federal workers that had been laid off, approximately 2,000 here in Fulton County. And that's a good sign. And I went over and talked to the Human Resources Department today and that they might send some of those, if they hire some of those people, as pledged that he could send them over to Judge Kirk's courtroom and that would help her out greatly. She has handled approximately 80,000 cases per year and really needs the help over there. And now I would like to introduce the Reeves Pension Security Municipal Bill. Since we are in a municipal monetary crisis, a Bretton Woods monetary crisis, we are looking at a possible federal debt default. When that happens, then at that point, all municipal retirement systems here in Atlanta would be insolvent. It would be way worse than 2011. And in that case, if that were to happen, we should go ahead and start working on a contract, a provisional contract with municipal workers, retirees. In that case, the retirement systems become insolvent, that they are immediately rehired as a no-show, on a no-show basis, and then will receive a paycheck. Of course, it increases the costs to the city immensely, but we can work on that. But it's, the City of Atlanta is actually way ahead of other municipalities in addressing this Bretton Woods monetary crisis. And thank you very much for your attention to this matter. Bye-bye.
Next speaker, Devin Franklin.
Good afternoon, councilpersons. We aren't familiar with one another. To the viewing public who is not familiar with me, my name is Devin Franklin. I am Senior Movement Policy Counsel for the Southern Center for Human Rights here in Atlanta, Georgia. The reason why I am here today. I hate to say that it kind of feels like Groundhog Day in the most horrible way. For some time when I would come speak before this body as well as the full body of council, I would often come and provide updates to you all regarding the ineffectiveness of the 2022 lease that you all authorized with Fulton County to lease ACDC to Fulton County Jail and Sheriff Patrick Labatt. Prior to the signing of that lease, my organization, our allies and coalition all spoke to how horrible an idea that that ordinance authorizing that lease would be. We told you that it would not be effective in reducing the amount of harms that occurred at the jail, specifically deaths. To date, more than 30 people have died under the custody of Sheriff Labatt while waiting pre-trial for the cases to resolve. And as of last Tuesday, a report was published that the second person had died while in custody of Fulton County Sheriff. And the report reads, as many of the other ones have read to this day, that a person was again found unresponsive inside of their jail cell. These are the same types of issues that led to you all even considering the legislation before. And we have yet to hear from anyone on this council. Councilman Hillis, you were head of the Public Safety and Legal Administration Commission. You sit on the Justice Policy Board. We've not heard your thoughts, ideas, ways to remedy this issue going forward. Since the point in time that the lease has been adopted, I would also add that the Department of Justice has conducted an investigation, thanks in no small part to the fact that my organization wrote a letter calling for an investigation to the Fulton County Jail and the conditions therein. That investigation has led to a series of findings. That finding has led to a consent decree. And that consent decree has led to a process that is going to lead to some remedial measures being instituted at the Fulton County Jail and which may have some potential impact on the City of Atlanta. My organization and I have worked to ensure that there was public input in these processes. We have conducted presentations and town halls around the issue and matter. And I would just like to report to you all some brief findings that we published in our interim report a week ago. Participants in our town halls did not believe that Fulton County had been transparent about the human rights abuses at the Fulton County Jail. Participants prioritized addressing use of force issues over the condition of the building, which was a topic for you all. Service providers are well informed about the abuses at the jail and should be consulted and the expertise should be landed to fix those issues. And finally, Fulton County must go beyond the minimum remedial measures to ensure sustained progress at the jail. I hope that at some point in time that you all will take the recommendations of experts like myself seriously as we seek to prevent future deaths at the Fulton County Jail. And I hope that you all will want to do your part. Thank you.
Our last speaker is Matthew Nursey.
Hello, committee. Thank you. My name is Matthew Nursey. I am with the Housing Justice League. I live in District 5. I wanted to talk about a couple things. The first thing is the public safety of our unhoused residents. I don't know if you all saw the video going around online of a vigilante tearing up and cutting up the tents of the residents living on Old Wheat Street, where our neighbor Cornelius Taylor was murdered, of course. And so, you know, this just really emphasizes to me or reiterates the fact that when we have, you know, barbaric policies like conducting these encampment sweeps, it kind of emboldens people such as that individual to act like that. And I just want to make sure that, you know, we're ensuring that we're looking after the public, the safety of our unhoused neighbors just as much as the safety of everyone else in the public. The other thing is the recent letter from the OIG staff. There were a few things that were concerning in it to me as a housing organizer. One being the firefighters who rely on a housing relief program and rental assistance but are not able to be paid a livable wage. And it's concerning that the fire department would be engaging in union busting as a organizer who organizes tenants and the tenant unions. Taking collective action with your coworkers is how you ensure that you get a quality contract, and I want to make sure that's respected. The other part of it, the biggest part, is the stuff regarding Courtney English, Star C, Partners for Home, other nonprofits getting preferential treatment and funding when there are lots of organizations out there that I'm sure would be able to make good use of funding. And Forest Cove was mentioned in the report. And so it seems like there's preference also being given to certain developers. And we just want to make sure, because, you know, the Forest Cove situation is still not fully resolved. Residents are displaced all across the city and it has been just a nightmare. And we want to make sure that, you know, when developments like that happen, that the community is involved and that we're not giving preference to certain nonprofits and certain developers. Which is why we asked originally, Housing Justice League, on this new task force that was created in the resolution by Jason Winston, that Partners for Home not be on that task force because of the immense power they hold and the sway they have. And I'm also just very concerned that the city is writing letters to the Attorney General telling them to disregard the letter altogether. So those are my concerns. Thank you.
Thank you. And we do understand that the individual that vandalized those tents charges have been brought against that individual. So thank you for your comments. If there are no objections, we would like to hear from the Honorable Liliana Batiera, District 5.
You have to, we're going to take the legislative.
Okay, okay. If there are no objections, we would like to bring the consent agenda forward. Mr. Overton?
This is, this is the ordinance for second reading, item number 22501123. An ordinance by councilmembers Liliana Batieri, Alex Wan, and Matt Westmoreland to amend the City of Atlanta Code of Ordinances, Chapter 10, Article 2, Division 5, Operational Rules, Section 10-220, Employees Mingling With Customers On Licensed Premises, Chapter 14, Article 9, Division 1, Adult Dance Halls, Section 14-384, Appearance Before License Review Board, Chapter 14, Article 9, Division 1, Teen Dance Halls, Section 14-429, Appearance Before License Review Board, Chapter 30, Article 16, Massage Establishments, Division 2, Section 30-959, Subsection A, Number 6, Revocation in Chapter 106, Article 4, Division 1, Section 106-127, Solicitation For An Illicit Sexual Act, To Remove References To Private, Unforced, Non-Commercial Axe Sodomy, To Bring The Code Into accordance with its constitutional privacy requirements of the State of Georgia Regarding Consentual Adult Sexual Activity, To amend Chapter 30, Article 8, Escort Services, To repeal ordinances regulating escort services and for other purposes.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you to the committee for allowing me to take my paper before business of the committee. This paper is just to strip a lot of the homophobic language that still exists in our city code, especially with the attacks on DEI that we're now seeing on a federal and state level. Councilmembers and I just wanted to make sure that we were taking out language that could be weaponized against members of our community and members of our LGBTQ community. So this was just something to further clean up our code and remove anything that could harm members of that community. So I ask that you all pass it.
Do we have any questions from the body? If not, move approval. Seconded by the Honorable Vice Chair Dustin Hillis, please open the vote.
Vote is open. Vote is closed, four yays, zero nays. The item is approved.
Thank you all so much.
Mr. Overton, may we take other agenda items at this time?
Madam Chair, that brings us to our consent agenda. We'll first take action on our favorable and unfavorable claims.
Can we have a motion to approve the favorable claims? Moved by the Honorable Ishay Collins, seconded by the Honorable the Honorable Mary Norwood, please open the vote.
Vote is open. Vote is closed, four yays, zero nays. The favorable claims have been approved.
May we have a motion to adverse the unfavorable claims? Moved by the Honorable Ishay Collins. Seconded by the Honorable Mary Norwood, please open the vote.
Vote is open. Vote is closed, four yays, zero nays. The unfavorable claims have been adverse. Madam Chair, that brings us to ordinances for first reading, starting with item number 1. This is 2501135, an ordinance by Public Safety and Legal Administration Committee authorizing the mayor or his designee to accept on behalf of the Atlanta Police Department a donation from the Urban Area Security Initiative through the Homeland Security and Emergency Preparations Department of 2025 Ford F-250s and 2025 F-350s valued at approximately $262,254.62 to be accepted in as a donation as of February 4th, 2025, for use as SWAT and bomb rapid response vehicles and for other purposes. Madam Chair, that brings us to our ordinances for second reading. Once again, we'll pick that up with item number 3. This is 2501127, an ordinance by Councilmember Jason Dozer authorizing the contribution of $115,000.01 from Council District 4 Discretionary Moving Atlanta Forward Funds to the Atlanta Fire Rescue Foundation to support improvements and upgrades to the Atlanta Fire Stations within Council District 4 pursuant to Section 6-306 of the City of Atlanta's Charter and for other purposes.
Move approval. Do we have a second? Seconded by the Honorable Vice Chair Dustin Hillis, please open the vote.
Vote is open. Vote is closed, four yays, zero nays. The item is favorable. Madam Chair, that brings us to our resolutions, starting with item number 4, 25R3267. A resolution by Public Safety and Legal Administration Committee authorizing the settlement of all claims against the City of Atlanta in the matter of Yolanda Dozier versus City of Atlanta Civil Action Number 1, Colon 20, Dash CV, Dash 04477, Dash WMR, pending before the United States District Court for the Northern District of Georgia, Atlanta Division, in the amount of $487,500.01. Authorizing the settlement amount to be charged and to and paid from 1001 General Fund, Center Number 200101, Non-Departamental, Account 521005, Litigation Expenses, and Functional Activity Number 1512000, Accounting and for other purposes.
Do we have a motion? Moved by the Honorable Mary Norwood, seconded by the Honorable Ishay Collins, please open the vote.
Vote is open. Vote is closed, four yays, zero nays. The item is favorable. And that brings us to item number 5, 25R3268. A resolution by Public Safety and Legal Administration Committee authorizing the reemployment of City of Atlanta retiree Sergeant Stephen B. Green in the amount, in the Atlanta Police Department for annual compensation not to exceed $78,980.80 pursuant to Section 3-505B of the City, of the Charter of the City of Atlanta and for other purposes.
Do we have a motion? Moved by the Honorable Ishay Collins, seconded by the Honorable Vice Chair Dustin Hillis, please open the vote.
Vote is open. Vote is closed, four yays, zero nays. The item is favorable. Madam Chair, we have nothing coming off of hell today, so this concludes our legislative agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Overton. At this time, we would like to hear from the Atlanta Police Department Deputy Chief Kelly Collier regarding crime statistics in the City of Atlanta.
Good afternoon, Public Safety Chair.
Welcome, Deputy Chief. Congratulations on your new role.
Thank you, thank you. Thank you very much. I'm Deputy Chief Collier, the commander of the Community Services Division. As we take a look at our crime stats. I thought we had them up, but if we don't, I'll just talk about them. Oh, you have them. Okay, great. As we take a look at our crime stats, what sticks out? We're down in every category with the exception of motor vehicle theft. However, we're down 44% for the year. We're up 26% for this week. However, we had a good, absolutely good arrests over in Zone 6 involving some auto theft suspects. So we received a call reference to an entering auto.
Wait one second. We do hear some disruption in the chamber. This is a very important presentation with the Atlanta Police Department. Please start over if possible.
So as we look at our crime stats, we're down in every category for the week with the exception of auto theft, even though we're down 44% for the year in auto theft. We had a great arrest this week as relates to auto theft. In Zone 6, we received a call on Lakeview Drive in a reference to an entering auto that escalated into an aggravated assault when the victim interrupted the suspect stealing his vehicle and they pulled out firearms. The officers responded quickly, notified our ACE unit, which is our Auto Crimes Enforcement Unit. They located the vehicle on I-20. The vehicle, the vehicle refused to stop and the ACE unit successfully terminated the pursuit with the pit maneuver. And there were no injuries. When it was all said and done, five people were arrested. Five firearms were recovered along with multiple credit and debit cards. Also this past weekend, our 911 center had an average of six-second answer time. That is very outstanding. They continue to do a great job in our 911 call center. Also, as mentioned earlier, the individual who damaged several tents near the MLK Center has been identified and several warrants have been issued for his arrest. This was a great job by our detectives, working all weekend long to quickly identify this individual and secure arrest warrants. At this time, we are currently looking for him. Are there any questions? Let me answer.
Do we have any questions from the body, the Honorable Ishay Collins?
Yeah, I just have one. For the increase in the auto thefts, is there any correlation in terms of the period where we've had like more events or particular sites, you know, is there any trans, like in particular sites of town or?
No, we did not have any, any commonalities or anything that drew our attention to that it may be related to certain incidents. It was just a one-off week.
Okay, thank you. That's it, Madam Chair.
Yes, any other questions? The Honorable Vice Chair Dustin Hillis.
Thank you, Deputy Chief Collier, for the presentation. Just wanted to congratulate you on your appointment to Deputy Chief and a number of days together back when you were, I think, even a lowly lieutenant.
That's correct. That night, that first night, we met out.
Congrats again.
Thank you very much.
Any other questions or concerns? Deputy Chief, since we have you, tell us a little bit about your career here in the City of Atlanta.
So I first started out in Zone 5, the downtown area. Soon after that, I became a crime analysis officer where I looked at crime trends and patterns, provided that information to the major. After that, I was a detective in our Major Crimes Section where I investigated crimes against children. After that, I was promoted to sergeant, where I worked the morning watch down in southwest Atlanta in Zone 4. I then became a member of our vice unit, weed and seed unit. After that, I was promoted to lieutenant. I worked in our Police Athletic League that's near and dear to my heart. I was over our vic unit at one point as a lieutenant. As a captain, I worked out in Zone 6. And as a major, I worked in Zone 1. And I was the academy director for some years. Worked in Zone 1 and then recently, most recently, I was the commander of the airport section. Hopefully, I didn't leave out anything.
Well, again, congratulations and thank you very much for your service to the City of Atlanta. Congratulations.
Thank you very much. Have a great day.
And now we will hear from And now we will hear from the Department of Law. Our City Attorney, Patrice Perkins Hooker.
Good afternoon, Councilmembers and members of the committee. I am Patrice Perkins Hooker. I'm the City of Atlanta Attorney and I am proud to be here to make a presentation on our quarterly presentation for the, this is the second quarter through, I think it's March, beginning of March. Anyway, we have a couple of, we have 82 people in our department, as you all may or may not be aware. 55 attorneys and the rest of them are staff. But I have two of my deputies who are with me here today that I want to identify because of the fact you keep hearing about their divisions, but you don't know the people. And there are more people in our department than just myself and Amber Robinson. So I wanted to encourage them to come. The ones who aren't sick today are my litigation deputy, Tori Smith, who's sitting here in the second row. And then the deputy who's in charge of operations and that includes everything from the Department of Public Works, Watershed Management, HR. Did I get everything? Yeah, Transportation. All of those areas fall under her. And so as we go through the updates since December 2024, I just want you to know that each of these sections represents the activities of people who are deputies underneath me. Our division metrics are divided by different groups and on page four, we begin the ones for litigation. So do I have to do this? Litigation has a total of 423 open matters, which is huge amount of open matters that we're tracking. 176 of them are being handled in-house and our goal has been to increase the number of cases that we handle in-house. That helps reduce the amount of expenses for outside counsel. But unfortunately, we still have quite a few cases that because of the expertise that we do not have the ability to handle. 247 of the cases are currently with outside counsel. We had 118 new litigation matters for this last quarter and we closed out 97. Thank you for you all's help with that. You all just had an agenda where you again process several of the claims that come through and settlement amounts that you all approved that we negotiate. The next area is Claims. Claims is our largest group of people within the litigation department because the City of Atlanta gets a tremendous amount of just new claim filings. We had 333 new claims that were just open in one quarter. And then we resolved 367. A few quarters back, we had 750 unprocessed claims and we have been working like Trojans to try and get those claims opened, reviewed and processed. And so now we are leveling out. The next one is on quiet titles and interpleter collections. We had 51 quiet title actions served upon the city and we filed 32 claims against those particular, in those particular cases for recoupment of basically property taxes that were outstanding. We collected 77,000. A lot of the cases are still going and they, the claims totaled $618,000. Our next division is the Business Services and Contracts Group. I have been serving as the deputy in this group because the mayor took Chandra Houston and appointed her interim Chief of Procurement. And so we've been short a deputy in this area and I have been supporting the, this team deals with contracts and you'll see we had 199 matters. And then we did a whole lot of meeting with clients to try to get the contracts that you all approved finalized and sent for signature. We also dealt with real estate matters or deal with real estate matters. And you can see from the report that's provided to you, the nature of the real estate matters that have been gone going for just that one quarter, and there were 90 of them. And then this is the division that Ms. Robinson also reports to. And this Legislative Administrative and City Council area, we had, as of that second quarter, we had 173 different types of legislative matters and we put client meetings by types of organizations there as well. The next division is our Municipal Governance Team. This team handles finance, the Municipal Court, public safety, the pension boards, the Solicitor's Office and the City Council and Municipal Clerk. Those matters were 413 matters and you see them broken down by the types of matters. And most of them are, we're dealing with in-person client meetings. And I try my best to get my team to do in-person rather than Zoom or Teams because that's the way you get a chance to really see and get to know what's happening. The Operations Team, which I indicated previously, the Deputy Sharon Broach is here. And the transportation metrics reflect 315 different types of matters. She also oversees a group that has the Safe E-Verify group. There's a one person actually who handles all of these E-Verifies for the city. And she gets inundated by the end of the year, but she had a total of affidavits received that she had to verify 332 in just the last quarter. Then the next one deals with the Operations Management. We're on page 13 if everybody's following me. And we ended up having a total of 460 matters related to Department of Watershed. And the biggest bulk of these have been client meetings because we've been dealing with a lot of EPA related matters and having to deal with the water treatment plants and various issues and challenges arising from there. That team also staffs the Water and Sewer Appeals Board. Then we have, the next division would be Aviation. The deputy there is a Kimberly Patrick, who is on leave this week. But they process 11,110 matters. A lot of them being contract negotiations, client meetings and legal opinion and advice associated with running the airport. As you know, there's quite a bit of moving parts with the Atlanta Airport and as a result, it creates a lot of transactional matters. Outside spending decreased from the period in 2024 that's comparable to this period in 2025. And we are continuing to try to bring that down. However, we get hit with surprise litigation from time to time that's unable to be forecasted. And so although we've been working to bring it down, it's not going to ever probably get down as far as I'd like it to get because I just don't know who's going to sue me and what the nature of the dispute will be. So do you have any questions about the report and the information that was provided to you regarding our department's operations?
The Honorable Vice Chair Dustin Hillis.
Thank you, Chairwoman Boone. Thank you.
Vice Chair, let me announce that we have been joined by the Honorable Antonio Lewis, District 12. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for the presentation, Madam City Attorney. You touched on it briefly, but, and you know, this has come up you know, with prior city attorneys, definitely not just this administration, but now the number of litigation matters that are, that are given to outside counsel approaching 60%. How do we get to that number? I know you referenced, you know, you only have so much man or woman power. But seems like a high number. And then furthermore, how do you as the city attorney keep tabs on those cases that are, that are referred to outside counsel? Of course, you are the city attorney. You have the best interest of the city at hand or should at all times. But you know, when you hire outside counsel, they may not have that same view as you do. And they work hourly, so they may try to extend cases or get those hours up. How, so that's kind of two questions that rolled into one, but.
I'll start with the first one. The, we will probably always be in excess of 50% of the cases that we have been tried outside. And that's because we don't handle and we'll never have the staff to be able to handle environmental cases. That requires a level of expertise that is tremendous and you're not going to pay me give me enough budget to pay for the cost for an environmental attorney. So we have a law firm that really just has a lot of cases and they come in a lot of different manners. Sometimes they're from private entities like the Riverkeeper. Sometimes they're from EPA, PDD. So those cases are always going to be there. The other large volume of cases that we're trying to work to whittle down, but we're not there yet are a lot of the police 1983 federal court action cases where there is alleged any type of unauthorized use of force or excessive use of force or death. And we have, as you know, they make the headline news, those types of cases. We have been handling more of our in-house tort cases. The cases where people file for claims because they fell, injured themselves on the sidewalk, got involved with a vehicle of cities. Those types of cases we handle in-house. But when we have cases like the case that we dealt with, the tasing of the college students earlier this year. I mean, there's just a whole lot of cases. And, and the nature of those are such that when people are suing for millions of dollars and they have to have discovery for several years, we, we just don't have enough people. But I feel good that I've got us fully staffed, which is something we didn't have in the beginning, but we're not going to be able to to get through all of those cases. Now, what we do to manage them, and I've been very proactive with this and this gentleman here can attest to it because he, it is in whom's responsibility, this is him. He has a team of people who are divided by Division A and Division, or Team A, Team B. They handle cases in-house and then there is an external manager of research, someone who manages external counsel. And that person looks at reports that are submitted on a monthly basis from the law firms who are handling cases. We look and evaluate their approach. We develop the strategy in-house. They consult with us for the development of their strategy. We make a decision of whether or not we're going to proceed because I don't like to spend money. I'm, I'm tight-fisted, as they will tell you. So I don't like to spend money. And so if we're going to lose a case and we're going to lose it, I don't want to go to a jury and try to lose it in the order of magnitude of millions of dollars. In this era of anti-police and anti the City of Atlanta, there are juries in Fulton County who just don't look at the facts as the facts. They look at how they would put themselves in the shoes of the victim. And so we have to balance that. If, if our discovery has not revealed enough ways to get us dismissed, we've been doing that a lot. We've been emphasizing motions for summary judgment, motions to dismiss in the beginning. So we are incurring lower levels of cost as a result of those approaches. But we manage them really pretty carefully. Deputy Smith, did I omit anything in my explanation? He has been with the city a total of 14 years, 13, but he, he had a break and went to the CDC and came back to us. And we're very happy that we've got him. But he's been a litigator all of his career. He's very knowledgeable about that.
All right. Thank you for that.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Chairwoman Boone.
The Honorable Ishay Collins.
I think that was actually my question and just an additional question just for clarity. Madam Attorney, on slide, sorry, get my notes. Yes, just really quickly on Slide 6, when you talk about the quiet titles and interpleter petitions. Just to be clear, those are individuals that are suing the city to clear title off the property and then someone else join, you know, someone else joins in terms of saying they have a claim or stake into that property.
Well, actually, the bulk of these cases involve someone clearing their own title, of which there is a lien outstanding against it. And so that is a regular process in order to get quiet title, to get free and clear of everything. Sometimes they arise from cases where people have gotten property through tax foreclosures and things like that where there are outstanding matters. There's also sometimes some condemnation matters that we have to get involved with as well, the defendant.
Thank you. And then on Slide 8, in terms of legislative items for real estate, just clarity, what type of, I mean, is it just the same type of items in terms of the council making a decision to support? Yeah.
It's actually drafting the legislation that is associated with the leases, the sales, the abandonment of a property. It's those types of legislative actions that we have that we prepare the documents for in the real estate team.
And then I know you talked about the E-Verify on Slide 12 and the staff person there, knowing that that could be a big process. Well, do you feel, you know, as you talk about being at least fully staffed and as we coming up on a budget season, is there space? Is there spaces that the, that the city can do more? I think for me, I was just kind of shocked at the magnitude of the, of the, you know, the magnitude of what the league comes through the legal department.
Yeah, they, we, yes, we could use more people. They have said that probably for the last couple of administrations, but we're working with what we have. Given the constraints that the city has, given the constraints about the budget, you know, we're team players. But this one woman does this work and she does a phenomenal job. I mean, but she's here every day working on forums from everybody else. So not a lot of slack time in this. And our, our office is one of those departments that are here four days a week, one day working remotely. So we're, you know, fully utilizing everybody's full extent that we can.
Then my last question is just Slide 5. The 333 new claims just from last quarter, were there any trends that you see in terms of those claims or they were just kind of throughout the, the department?
They are basically, the bulk of our claims involve things that are happening with transportation, the street roads, vehicle accidents involving the city vehicles. We've had fire trucks cut off people's, what do you call them? Side view, side view mirrors. We've had people, city vehicles run into people, back into them. We've had sidewalk cracks. We've had plates for work that, you know, has caused someone some, some damage or injury because they didn't know it. Those are the bulk of it and there are a lot of them happening all over the city with every, every person who drives a vehicle, you know, so that's Public Works, the collection, trash people, it doesn't matter where it is. It's just, it's the nature of being an entity that has this many employees and this many vehicles. You're going to have these types of accidents occur.
Thank you. Thank you. That's all the questions I have, Madam Chair.
Thank you. The Honorable Antonio Lewis.
And thank you again, Madam Chair and Attorney Hooker. I think my, my question is just running around some of your comments. You said the worry and we have jurors that may be anti-police or anti-City of Atlanta. Can you respond to that?
Well, that is the nature of the world right now. There is an anti-police sentiment that runs definitely United Stateswide that we have seen that impacts the amount of the award and the frequency of which they find awards against policemen. Even if they are right and adjudicated by third-party entities as being having no fault with regard to accidents, we end up getting in front of a jury and have your clock cleaned. If you haven't thought about ways to, I guess mitigate it through settlement. It's a very strange time and I've been practicing a long time and this is only in the last about four years, it's been this type of anti-sentiment. And then Atlanta and Fulton County, you know, we're the big bad, we're the big bad wolf and people think we have deep pockets and they want to hold the city accountable for anything that it does wrong. Not just hold you accountable, but you could have damages, say $12,000 for one of those accidents on the street. You know, you hit a pothole or you had a significant damage, tore up your axle in your car and somebody wants to give you $250,000 for it. It's, it defies logic.
I appreciate you. And I think that a lot of folks also disdain it for the systems. So I don't think it's just about anti-police or anti-Lan. I think a lot of it, they've seen the systems. and they want to see the systems work right. And so whenever they see things that don't work right and jurors are, that's what I've seen. But I truly appreciate you and I truly appreciate this report, but I wanted to make sure. I've seen people say the system that we've set up and they see black people in, in charge and they're like, these black people can help us because this system has been set up against us, so.
But you know, when, when people think that the problem is the, the monies that come to pay these judgments that are inappropriately assessed come from your taxes. And it just, it, it kind of, kind of a catch 22. The system provides things for the benefit of the taxpayers, but it costs some money.
So that's similar to like, is that anything like with the governor trying to do with torts?
In fact, the, yeah, the governor is trying to limit the amount of the ceiling that you can recover on a tort. Right now, they are only dealing with it from the state, but I have definitely weighed in. We ought to get some limitations too because right now, believe it or not, if you have a motor vehicle accident involving a city vehicle, there's a cap on the damages. The, the amount that you can recover for a motor vehicle is $500,000 per, for one person and $750,000 for however many vehicles, that's the total, period, whether a person lives or dies. However, if there's a negligence action that's not associated with a vehicle, so a police officer shooting or an alleged police officer shooting, shooting based on negligence or you have, trying to think of another example we see regularly, those caps, people's lives are way over assessed, getting jury verdicts in the multiple double digits, sometimes millions of dollars.
To make sure, so that means that the city, we already have like a cap on the amount that people can receive in vehicles?
For vehicle, that's, that's a statutory, state statute cap.
Okay, so that means, and you said, are we in support of the torts?
I am in support of the tort cap and this is somebody who used to be president of the state bar. It's got to be a limit and since juries are not being rational, reasonable, whether you do it, it's three times your damages or four times your damages, it's got to be some limit. And right now they're proposing, I think it's a million dollars is under the, the new statute.
And so that's the governor's, so we support the ci, not we, the city would support.
What, what I said was I?
Gotcha, I was making sure, okay. I asked some question around that.
I said, I, I am full support because I'm paying out too much money if, if we had a million dollar cap that applied to municipalities. Because right now the governor's bill does not apply to municipalities. I would be in favor of it, yes.
All right, thank you again.
Okay.
The Honorable Ishay Collins.
Yeah, no, I, I think that's it. I think as we, I think that's a great question for, on Councilman Lewis' part, just to understand the impact of what the tort reforms at, at the, what the tort reform at the state level will have and how that will trickle down. And I think it is important to understand where as the entity, as a city government, you know, as a, as an entity, this, you know, city government weighing in on a limitation. But if you're on the other side, it may be a different conversation. So, you know, of course you're going to see more advocacy on, for victims that, I mean, that's coming from a person, you know, as a turn that, that represented victims in terms of against the tort reform. I think it's also important to understand that it's not just coming from the governor, but our own legislatures, even in our delegation is advocating for this, you know, is, is advocating for tort reforms. I do think, I appreciate you uplifting it, Councilman Lewis, because I do think it is something that we should, that we definitely need to monitor as it will, as it impacts down the line, so.
And, and I think I, I asked the question, just listening to your replies and, because it seemed like you were more, and the reason why I say it's the governor, because it was one of his top priorities this year.
And, and it did pass, it crossed over.
Yep, if you're looking at both sides, you're looking at the language that's coming out. We have some apartments on Cleveland Avenue in particular, we've been watching and monitoring the, the amounts. And so it was really good to, it was interesting to hear any type of response from the city on this because I've stayed watching and monitoring and I've been looking for a response from our, from our, our side. And that was a response from you, not from the city.
That's correct.
Because I'm also looking at our delegation, our Fulton County delegation and, and pushing against it. A lot of folks, they've been fighting, they're fighting the governor on this full out. And a lot of our Democrats in the state of Georgia are fighting the governor full out on this. So I'm, I've been watching and I've been meeting with both sides. So thank you again on that. Thank you again, Chair.
Thank you. Thank you. And I would like to also thank you and your team for making yourselves available and accessible, especially for the Atlanta Commission on Women, staying very late to help us with those bylaws and just getting things together with the new board that has been established. Again, thank you for your hard work and dedication and your entire team for everything you all have done.
And thank you. That's our, that's our job. We, we work for you guys too.
Thank you.
That's why we're here for. Now, you also asked us to provide some information on a decision I made to transition the city's efforts to collect on code enforcement.
The Administrative NREM.
NREM.
NREM Review Board that was established by the Code of Ordinances. We do need to be briefed on that. Many of us are under the impression that this warrants further discussion in a public hearing. So if you all would please let us know, give us a, a detailed explanation of this change and when this will be happening. This is very important to the citizens of Atlanta.
On May 6, I sent a memo to all of you all responding to the question you asked me about why we felt the need to change from administrative to judicial and RAM.
If you could just start from the beginning for the public. We want to start from the very beginning for, for the public so that they can understand and we can further understand as well.
All right. The city has a Department of Code Enforcement, which was empowered to look at properties, assess whether or not they are blighted, whether or not they need to be demolished, et cetera. That determination by that code enforcement used to go to the solicitor's office and it was presented to a board called an NREM board where they made a decision of whether or not to place a lien or issue, excuse me, issue an order finding a property was not in compliance, the property needed to be cleaned up. This, they could, the order could include monies that the city put into cleaning it up or put into demolishing the property. And the Administrative NREM board was created by the city council.
What, what year was it created, the Administrative NREM Review Board?
I don't have that actual number, but I'm sure.
Does anyone on your team have that available?
While, while I'm speaking to you, I'm sure that Amber can find out for you, but I know it was years ago. And we'd have the section of the code, but I don't have the year. But it was created to handle those types of cases.
Okay, I wanted to know, what year was it established?
Good afternoon, Amber A. Robinson, City of Atlanta Department of Law. The Administrative NREM Board and Process was codified in October of 2008.
2008. Thank you.
So over the years, that process worked just like that code enforcement said, as apartment buildings, oh, it needs to be cleaned up, here's some fees, expenses that the city incurred. The city was able to go to the Administrative NREM board, get an order for the amount of attorney's fees that they expended, as well as the amount of the cost they expended. And then they also added penalties and interest as time went along with the lien wasn't paid. The problem is that the law doesn't allow the admin orders to be treated like a judicial NREM order. And as such, courts have, when I got on board, I started looking at why we were losing these cases and it became clear to me that the courts have ruled against us with the ability to assess penalties, the ability to assess interest on those liens. And those liens cannot be extended beyond seven years for collections. And unfortunately, the city has not been actively collecting on the liens. The liens kind of be, are collected as a part or a byproduct of these quiet title actions. Or, and so seven years generally has lapsed. The city had actively double-digit numbers of cases when I came on board. There were outstanding going through the courts. And we were challenged in the courts with regard to whether or not the state statute allowed for the collection of interest penalties and whether or not it granted a super lien status. And since we lost those cases, we lost the ability to collect any money on a lien. And seeing that month after month of my first three, four months, as Councilman Hillis indicated, I was like, wait a minute, what's going on with this from an outside counsel point of view? Why are we losing? I read the orders and I read the decisions in the Superior Court and we went to the Court of Appeals with it. And it is clear that the Administrative NREM liens are not a way for the city to collect money because of the fact that the administrative, administrative NREM liens do not involve service on the property owner. It involves service only of the property. So you can tack it, paste it, send it to that address, but it's not personal service. And since it's not personal service, it's not rising to be given respect in the court in the same level that you would if you had personal service on the property owner, which is what the judicial NREM process allows us to do. So when I saw that, I said, okay, we need to stop using administrative NREM liens and orders and start going through judicial in order so we can collect some of these liens. And you can collect in the future more than seven years because it allows you to refresh it every seven years. You got a lien and year six, it's coming up to year seven, you can refresh it and it can keep it going. And since the city doesn't have a collections unit to go institute actions against these property owners who must not have any money anyway, other than the property, because they didn't pay for the, the expenses in the beginning. So we went all the way through a legal proceeding, be it NREM or judicial, without collecting any money from them. And then we don't have collections units to go after those liens. So we wait until they are involved in selling them, condemnation, quiet titles, anything that causes the lien to show up on the public records that require payment to provide clear title. And that is why we're not collecting these. I think I gave you a whole list of all of the ones that were currently outstanding. I think they were over $700,000 and of that amount, we had only been able to collect $126,000 because of them being voided in some cases by the court because they were over seven years old in order, and them being reduced in some cases because we couldn't collect the penalties and the interest. So I made that decision because you are vested in my office, the ability to make decisions on cases and legal cases and legal strategy. And I made a decision that I was going after a process that would allow us to be able to collect the money. And since it was just changing legal processes, it didn't require doing anything from a public perspective. I didn't abolish the NREM board. I didn't create a judicial NREM board. I'm going to a judge now in municipal court to get an actual order in municipal court, rather than going to an NREM proceeding that I can't have an order to, that's enforceable. So that's what I did and I think I gave you a lot of details, including the case that most recently threw us in the loop, which was the Flat Rocks versus Labatt. And we were part of the liens in there. And then we've also had a couple of cases brought by an attorney, John Karp, that has, it just made us just a little in-depth look. And I brought in all the attorneys and people who were involved in the real estate. I brought in the solicitor and we had a conversation about this process and how we could make it more beneficial to the city and that's what happened.
Madam City Attorney, I, I so wish that the Atlanta City Council had been involved in those conversations. I really do wish that we had been invited to some of those conversations. At this point, what will the Administrative NREM Review Board, we have appointees on that board, what would they be charged with at this time?
Well, at this time, I am not certain because as I told you, our plan was not to deal with the board. We were actually only dealing with the processes, NREM process versus judicial and RAM, administrative and RAM versus judicial. So I would actually have to look at that because there may be certain items that might be appropriate for the NREM, the Administrative NREM, but not those that we envisioned taking a while to collect. You know, if there is something that someone has a dispute about that's easily resolved or something that they can pay a lower amount and the NREM board says, okay, we, the city thinks you need $1,000 or here's 500, it might be something like that. But we haven't, because we didn't envision it dissolving them, we never had that part of the discussion. And I'm sorry, I didn't realize that you all wanted to be a part of that. I was trying to make certain, like, I found a way to collect this money.
Yes, we, we definitely want to be a part of any conversations of anything that has to do with our constituents. We work very closely with this department, as you know. Next question will come from the Honorable Dustin Hillis, our Vice Chair. Before you start, sir, do we have any plans on letting the public know, the MPU chairs? Do we have anything, anything planned to let them know that this board no longer, we went through a process where we had these televised so that the public could be included in these? Do you have any plans on letting the citizens know about this change?
I had no plans on doing that. In light of your comments and your information, we can try to do, do so. But it, again, we weren't removing the Administrative NREM board, but we are eliminating its cases. And so to the extent that they are reviewed as one and the same, that we can go through all of those processes. I don't have any problem with explaining why I'm providing the documentation I provided to you, but I never thought about it as being needing, I mean, we, there's a lot of things I do to make decisions which I never thought about as needing public input.
Yes, we have a full board that were, that was established and we know those appointees. This is how we found out that they were no longer, they felt that their services would no longer be needed. But I will go to the Honorable Vice Chair Dustin Hillis.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Madam City Attorney. So I kind of in the same boat as the Chair. I would have wished that the city council would have been, at the very least, notified about this, if not involved in the decision-making process. I know, you know, each, each of these, whether it's NREM or judicial, administrative NREM or judicial NREM, I mean, they existed for a number of years and we've always been told that, you know, there was a decision made that, you know, which one to use. So that, that's just the feedback there and that's not to discount what you're saying. I understand what you're saying about the process and recovering liens, et cetera. But how, I guess, who, who altered you involved in this decision-making process? Because it's not just you're taking away work of the Administrative NREM board and you're going to judicial NREM. That involves, each, each one of those routes involves different people and different tools that the city has to use. So how has that process either already been changed or how is that changing? I mean, with the Administrative NREM board, if they were meeting, and sometimes they didn't, but meeting monthly and having 20 or so cases a month, I mean, that's 200-plus demolitions a year we could look forward to. And I just have not seen that level of success out of judicial NREM. And maybe that's just because, to your point, we hadn't been using it as much. So where, where do we go from here?
Well, we have.
It's in my heart because I was involved in code enforcement way before even getting on the city council. I was a neighborhood advocate, worked, was on the board of my neighborhood or for my predecessor, pretty specifically on code enforcement and public safety issues. And then, of course, it's been a priority of mine in District Nine in my almost eight years on council, so.
What, we implemented a plan and I don't know if, me, what, here. We initiated a plan with the Solicitor's Office and the judges. And Ms. Washington, Shamia Washington is our deputy division chief, who's under the Municipal Services Division and she supports the solicitor and the municipal court. And you all had those meetings, can you provide some details on the dates?
Good afternoon. So there are the same people involved. The only difference is, is that the board members for the administrative process are no longer involved. The municipal court has not handled judicial and REM cases since. The Municipal Court has not handled judicial and rim cases since about 2016. That's the last time the Solicitor's Office had a prosecutor dedicated to do so. Mr. Carter's office now has four prosecutors that are able to handle the caseload. So this was just the insertion of the judges being made aware that these cases are now going to be brought back because they were done before in front of the Honorable Crystal Gaines. I know you remember when she was over housing. And now they're going to be done in front of Judge Sykes. So that's the only change.
And that was last month we had the training with them?
Yes, ma'am.
That's why you haven't seen, they're gearing up.
Just speak into the mic. So the public can hear you too.
These trainings started last month, that's why I was asking her. With those parties involved, the judges, the Solicitor's Office, our office. And so they are starting up now, but it started last month.
And so what is the target, I guess? You're going to process so many cases monthly through the court or?
Correct. Ultimately, it will be the same amount that was going before the administrative interim. So you could think of maybe about 20 a month. But the court is actually able to handle more than that. So once they get ramped up in the motion, they may add on more. The process is the same. It starts with a complaint to code enforcement. Code enforcement is going to take that complaint, which, as you all know, that code enforcement takes citations to the municipal court all the time. They're just not on the properties that have the multiple citations. Sometimes they are set up for nuisance abatement. But the judicial and rim process is a better holistic approach to prosecuting the blight that we're trying to attack. So if we had that for like Forest Cove, that would have been a better approach to go after Forest Cove or to get the justice that we sought for Forest Cove. Using the judicial and rim complaint would have been a better vehicle to use. So code enforcement, Daphne Tally's group is going to do the same thing that they do currently. They're going to create the file based on the complaint from citizens. They're going to take that file and the citizen, the people who actually own the property, to the municipal court. What this is going to do is going to clear up things. I remember Chair, Councilmember Lewis was very concerned about due process, the property owners being notified, all of the heirs to the property being notified. So those are things that are now going to be handled by the lawyers in the Solicitor's Office. And then the judge will be overseeing to ensure that that due process is being done, that everybody that's supposed to be notified is there. If it's a corporation, the judge is better apt at bringing those corporations, those corporate parties into the courtroom and talking to those stakeholders and getting the results that we're looking for.
So two, I guess, requests. Number one, because I know the judicial interim process has existed and I know how it works, but as to your point, it hasn't been used in a number of years. If either Solicitor's Office or possibly Code Enforcement Office as well could put something up for the public, like a flow chart or something of how this process works? And then, you know, previously, when there were administrative interim hearings, we were giving, we were forwarded, as were many people, the public schedule and all of the properties that were on that list. So is that something you all are going to do monthly? Are you going to prepare a report to the City Council that shows, here are all the cases that are going to judicial interim this month? Or how is that going to work?
Yeah, I don't think we're going to do that because that would take another step because our office doesn't track those cases. They're in the Solicitor's Office. But what we can do is have the, I mean, the judge's calendar is public information, have the judge's calendar of those cases, you know, put on the internet. It's already on the internet. It's in the municipal court. So they would be looking for the calendar and it may not just be one calendar per month because we're able to do more this way. As they come through, as they need to be adjudicated, they'll be adjudicated and they will be listed. Now, I think that there could be, and there is some coding on the case that lets them know that it's a code enforcement case for judicial and rim versus anything else.
And it will still be posted on the property. So notification about the hearing and when it is, not only will go to all of the interested parties, but code enforcement is still going to follow through with their normal process of posting it on the properties. So all of the notice requirements are still going to be met.
So again, Ms. Tally, can you, Director Tally?
Director Tally, tell us a little bit, give us your name and your position.
Good afternoon, Daphne Tally, the Director of the Atlanta Police Department Code Enforcement Section.
And so my transitioning over to directing the question to you, as you know, this body's always been notified monthly of the properties that are going through hearings, what the recommendation is, whether they're demolished or clean and closed. Are you still going to maintain what you all have referred to the judicial interim process? Because I just don't think even the public, especially, and even us, should have to dig through a court calendar to see what properties that we've been trying to get demolished for 10 years to see when they're going to be heard in court.
So, and I don't know if I can answer that question just yet because we're not going to be in control of the agenda. As Ms. Washington stated, we're going to transfer those cases over to the Solicitor's Office. So they will prioritize how those cases will appear on an agenda. So, I mean, if we get it, of course, we're happy to share it. I just don't know if I can answer that question, if they're going to be able to provide that information or if code enforcement will be able to provide the agenda as we've done in the past.
Okay. Can you, Chairwoman Boone, can you make a note that we need to hear from the Solicitor's Office about what process they're going to have and notifying us and the public of what cases are being heard?
Yes. And also, there are some questions regarding any legislative actions for the Administrative Innen Realm Review Board. We are hearing from the public as we meet and this is their first time hearing about these changes.
So as we stated, right now, there is no decision as to whether or not we should dissolve. I, me personally, I don't think we should dissolve the Administrative Innen Realm Review Board. As you know, we've been very successful in the past. Maybe we can look at triaging cases as they come forward. Certain cases may go before the Administrative Innen Realm Review Board versus judicial interim proceedings.
Now, that makes sense to me. That makes sense to me because of the backlog that may happen over in the municipal court. And for us to have a board, an administrative interim board, that those appointees have not, their terms have not expired.
Correct.
Their terms, so to have them in place and have nothing for them to do is problematic. But continue, continue.
And it's, so even cases that are not demolitions, but, you know, clean and closes or things of that nature, even the lesser like clean and cut that you have contractors do, would that still have to go through the judicial interim process or would that be a different process?
So clean and cuts, of course, does not require any kind of formal proceeding. What we've done in the past, per code, is as long as we have issued a notice of 20 days to the property owner and posted the property, after that time has expired, the city is authorized to clean and cut those properties. So no formal proceeding is necessarily required.
Clean and close?
For clean and cuts. Clean and closes, yes. So same as, the same as we treat the demolitions. So we do require a formal proceeding. Some of our clean and cuts, the cost of those sometimes can exceed the cost of a demolition depending on the size of the structure. But we can work with the Law Department as well as the Solicitor's Office as, I mean, in determining which process is best for that particular case.
Thank you, all three of you.
Okay, thank you.
The Honorable Mary Norwood.
I heard you, Councilman Hillis. We will try to figure out how to get a printed calendar of those cases because we do know which ones are going. I just don't know when the judge would calendar, but we'll work on that part of.
I want to tell you how glad I am to hear of your initiative. For years, I have tried so many times when I ran citywide and served citywide to get the really bad, bad actors, the blighted properties, the LLCs, where we couldn't find them, we couldn't do anything, and so they harm our community. So I understand you may want an administrative interim if you've got someone who's got a homeowner exemption, the homeowner's there, it's something that is minor or maybe not so minor, but to the chair's concerns of people with limited means, being careful they don't get caught up in judicial. So it seems to me that the judicial is for these really bad actors that so many of our communities are plagued with all the time. The state changed the law to make blight a reason for eminent domain. And they did that about six years ago. And I had not seen the solicitor take that on. And again, this is not someone with a home state exemption who has an awning that's fallen down. This is really awful, awful properties in our, in our communities across the city. So I think that this is a great step in the right direction because what I had said years ago is, if, you know, let's get the rules right, but let's do eminent domain if we have a LLC that is not going to behave. And we wouldn't have to take many of them for people to start behaving better. So I love judicial and the fact that we can have a mechanism. I agree with the Chair that she wants to make sure that we don't get a homeowner who has something that is, could get caught in this kind of a stronger process. But boy, do we need this for the really bad situations that we have out there. So thank you.
And we have to be real careful since someone will probably retrieve this tape. We are not targeting one class of property owner versus another.
No, I am making, I'm making a prejudicial statement as a city-elected official, not as a member of the Law Department, coming up with plans and procedures.
Just want to be caveat in it, but we'll look into how we can use.
But my position remains that I have been traveling this city for too many decades to have some of the things that my colleagues are plagued with. Thank you. The Honorable Antonio Lewis.
And I also want to say thank you for being so intentional with what you're doing. And as a councilperson, I want to make sure I am pleading that we are sensitive to families like families being caught up in it like me, families who just didn't have a will at the time period. Because whenever they see this, whenever they hear eminent domain, they also see land grab and they're nervous. And so we do have families that are going through something. So I truly appreciate our Chair for, Madam Chair, for putting this on my, for not only putting this on our legislative docket, for making sure that you talked to me two, three years ago, Madam Chair, to make sure that we did this right. And I appreciate the, I appreciate y'all for making sure we do this right from the code enforcement. I know y'all had some hard, some hard conversations with some families in our city. And so Ms. Shamia, thank you so much. Ms. Tally, thank you so much. Ms. Hook, Attorney Hooker, thank you so much for stepping into the Law Department and taking this on because I'm a family who almost lost our property. I had to go find $8,000, right? So I had to do that. So thank you so much for doing this.
Thank you. Madam City Attorney, we would like to hear from you all in 30 days with a full presentation on this. We would like to know when this will start. We are concerned about the backlog that it will create for Judge Sykes. We are concerned about the Administrative Innen Realm Review Board's responsibilities going forward. And we would like to see you all again in 30 days with a full presentation on this rollout. And Madam City Attorney, please let all interested parties know that we were not properly informed. The City Council was not properly informed and we believe that this matter warrants public discussion. Thank you. Thank you. And now we will hear from the Department of Corrections, Chief Eldra Dancy. Congratulations, Chief, on your new role, your, the same role, but new title. We are so very happy for you and the way you all handled that facility. It is clean, it is safe, and it is sanitary. And for that, we appreciate you and your entire team.
Thank you, ma'am, and thank you for your support. We're going to go ahead and move into our presentation. Good afternoon, Madam Chair and other distinguished council members. I am Eldra Dancy, Chief of Corrections. This will be our FY '25 second quarter presentation, which covers the months of October, November, and December. So we always like to start with our vision statement. It helps us align with the city's mission and message. Our vision statement is to protect the public while striving for excellence through exemplary customer service and promoting community involvement. And our mission statement is to provide a safe and secure correctional environment, enhance public safety through partnerships with the community and law enforcement. And on the next slide, you'll see some examples of our second quarter partnerships. We still have a strong partnership, strong relationship with Emory Forensic Psychiatric Fellows. They come out to our, come out to our facility twice a week on Tuesdays and Thursdays to connect with those detainees that are having mental health challenges. And as you can see, they connected with 133 during this last quarter. And this is great for our detainees because they are added to their database so they can track them for follow-up appointments, medication, and so forth. The next one is the emergency management. We have an ongoing relationship with Felipe's team. During this quarter, we provided services during the Bridge Detail Initiative and the Warming Center activations. And I just want to bring your attention to the meals during that time. Bridge Detail, our food service team provided 7,040 meals during that event. That's breakfast, lunch, and dinner. And then the Warming Center activations, 7,700 meals to our most vulnerable citizens who are, most of them are experiencing food insecurities. So definitely want to thank Ms. Brooks, Director Brooks, and Supervisor Sharad and their team for providing those services to our citizens. And then, of course, Second Chance Partnership. This is an ongoing partnership that we have with the State DOC. Additional partnerships, we partner with Atlanta Police Athletic League. And this is an opportunity for us to spotlight one of our employees, Shantavius Nicole Pounds. She personally raised $1,200 and provided that to the Atlanta Police Athletic League in memory of her son, an innocent person who was tragically killed by gun violence, Cameron Snead. This was just a great opportunity and we're so proud of her. She, this is her opportunity to really teach us how to turn a tragic situation into an opportunity for positive growth. So again, congratulations to Ms. Pounds for providing that service to our at-risk kids with Atlanta Pal. And of course, the Warming Center, we just talked about that. We've continued that relationship. And then Someone Cares. We've recently rekindled this relationship with this organization to educate and empower individuals living with HIV/AIDS and other health disparities to achieve better health outcomes. The next slide involves our detainee transportation efforts. Transportation has always been challenging for some of our detainees. So in an effort to address this issue, we've partnered with Chief Farley's team, Office of Sustainability, and Common Courtesy to provide free rides from AC/DC for our detainees. And as you can see in the second slide, second box there, the motor, provide, we provide free motor cards as well for those detainees. The next slide involves employment and attrition. Our hiring numbers have continued to improve. As you can see, sworn back in October, we had 143 and 64 civilians. November, 159 sworn, 62 civilians. In December, 161 sworn and 60 civilians. And as you can see, the bar graphs there, which displays our onboarded versus attrition numbers. numbers. And the next slide is an opportunity that we took advantage of at City Hall in October, I'm sorry, November, on November the 7th, and want to thank Commissioner Blackburn and his team, the HR team, for their partnership during this job fair. And of course, we always try to expand our training opportunities to assist with sharpening the skills of our employees and, and give them an opportunity for career advancement and career growth. And during this time, as you can see, the trainings that we took advantage of, and just want to give a special thanks to those who helped out with the leadership training, Major Hertz with Georgia State Police Department, Natalie Amon, Communications Director for Fulton County Sheriff's Office, and Dr. Lisa Domeno, Domeny, APD Training Manager. The next slide involves our court statistics in partnerships, in partnership with Municipal Court. Our facility continued court proceedings through video kiosks. And as you can see, the numbers, in custody court numbers from FY '23, 1236, FY '24, 2169, and FY '25, 2434. And in-court statistics, this is a new customer-friendly process that many have taken advantage of. And if I could draw your attention to the bar graphs there, the orange bar graph represent FY '29, in-court versus cash. As you can see, we had a slight increase there of about $100,000. But this quarter, we have seen a significant increase with in-court online use where we have about a 400, a little over $450,000 variance there. So we are happy that our customers are taking advantage of this easy, safe, and simple process. And as you can see at the bottom of this slide, we have begun the online payment, available, the payment process at ATL Department of Corrections, payment.com. Any citizen who's using a bonding company can take advantage of this. As you know, most of our detainees go through the bonding process. So this was, would be also another great opportunity for them as we strive to improve customer service and efficiency. The next slide involves our booking and average daily population. These are numbers we provide to council quarterly. The FY '23 numbers, if you can see, the orange bar is going to represent ACDC, and the light colored yellow bar would represent Fulton County numbers. Our numbers for FY '23, 943, 877, and 24, and 979, and 25. And our average daily population, as you can see, almost doubled from FY '23 at 51, 24, 64, and currently FY '25, 99. The next slide, we always provide our top 10 charges so you could see what our detainees are normally charged with. As you can see, the first eight involve traffic charges where Municipal Court has concurrent jurisdictions over those cases. And I always like to explain that some of these numbers could be skewed because one charge could include multiple offenses. Like you could have a DUI charge. Also with that same charge, you could have no tag or no insurance, which would be lesser included offenses but counted in this, with these numbers with one arrest. The next slide, this is a slide that was requested by council, the demographics with at ACDC and Fulton County at our facility, which includes gender, race, average age, and the average length of stay. On the left, you'll see the second quarter numbers, and on the right, you'll see the FY '25 numbers. And the next slide, as you know, our, our relationship with Fulton is ongoing, started in December of 2023, 22, I'm sorry. So we're a little over two years into that relationship. And as you can see, the bar graphs, the blue colored graph involved the female detainees that came over with Fulton, and the orange bar graph represent the male detainees. And as of today, when we checked this morning, we had 300, we have 355 detainees from Fulton County, 239 females, and 110, I'm sorry, 116 males. The next slide involves tours at ACDC. On the left there, Deputy Commissioner Edmonds with 311 came over to do a tour of ACDC and Grady. And there on the right, as you can see, Madam Chair Boone and Councilmember Collins came by to do a tour at ACDC and a comprehensive tour there at the Diversion Center with the Director Karen Sutton. So we definitely appreciate your support, Madam Chair and Councilmember Collins, and thank you for your interest in ACDC. And the next slide involved our, our community engagement as we continue to go beyond the walls. This was an event in District 10 with Harris Foundation Food Drive at Jackson Memorial Church with Councilmember Chair Boone's team. And as you can see, we have quite a few pictures there displayed. Our team definitely enjoyed interacting with the community during that event. The next slide involved an event we worked with Councilmember Bond with HelloFresh in Cohen Park on November 26. And as you can see, our team is pictured there at the bottom. And again, another Christmas food drive with Huncho Farms at Jackson Memorial Church in District 10. As you can see, our team is partnered with Councilmember Boone's team during that event. And this is an event with the National Faith in Blue. We've worked with APD during these events, but this time we partnered with the City of South Fulton, Chief Meadows and Assistant Chief Eddie Smith, with Dr. Battle and Bishop Lackey went out to provide support during this event. And as you know, this was during, these photos were, were during the soft opening of the Diversion Center back in October, but now they are fully operational. They are open fully on January the 28th and have been moving forward. And so far, it's my understanding they haven't had any major issues or interruptions since that time. And then this top left, again, is the photos from Ms. Pounds' presentation to PAL. She provided that $1,200 check again in the name of her son, Cameron Sneed, to Lieutenant Carter and Atlanta Police PAL League. And then on the right there is, our team went out to talk to students at Booker T. Washington. We definitely appreciate partnering with APS. This was Officer Memes, I mean Officer Sims and Mensey that went out to just try to expose those kids to the realities of prison life in an effort to provide prevention. And this is a slide where we went over to work with the Center, City View Scholars to provide a reading opportunity. This was done by Officer Lane, one of our new officers there in the bottom right. And bottom left there is Officer Memes. Definitely appreciate them going out and interacting with our children. And then finally, we are definitely proud of Director Williams and Major Wiggins there on the left, two of our leaders at DOC who attended and completed the Georgia State Leadership Academy for Women in Law Enforcement. And as we enter Women's Month, definitely proud to announce as well, Dr. Battle was recognized at the Atlanta Commission on Women's back in, on women back in Octobers. And that's it. Again, thank you, Madam Chair, for this opportunity, and definitely appreciate the Public Safety Committee's support of ACDC. And of course, we are here for any comments or if you have any questions.
Thank you, Chief. I would like to ask your wonderful staff if they would stand. I want to thank them. Please stand for all you all do. We really appreciate you all. Let's give them a hand. You all run a safe, sanitary, and clean facility. You all treat our citizens with humanity, and for that, we appreciate it, especially keep those hot meals coming.
Yes, ma'am.
Keep those hot meals coming. I run into homeless individuals, and sometimes during the year, that is the only time they can get a heated meal. For that, we appreciate you all, and a nutritious meal as well. So please relay that to the staff.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions or concerns from the body? The Honorable Antonio Lewis.
And Chief Dancy, thank you so much for your support of District 12, so much of your support of the City of Atlanta. Last week, I had the opportunity to go to a career fair, and, and you, you were able to send over a few folks to Silver Hill Middle School. The students loved our, I don't know if you know the exact folks who you sent over? I don't. And I don't want to be wrong with names, but, but, but as I look at this photo, as I look at this photo, I know some folks was over at Silver Hill Middle with me, and the students loved them, and we truly appreciate the presence in the community. That's how we build a different type of relationship, and we build a lasting relationship with our young folks. So truly thank you for that. My, my question was surrounding one of the hottest items in the state of Georgia. And if I, if I don't, if I have you in front of us and I don't ask any questions around you, sir, I don't think I'm doing my job as a councilperson. The, you are known, and ACDC is seen as one of the best-run facilities, like run facilities in the country, particularly in our county. And I know the last three years since I've been on council, I didn't vote for that legislation, didn't vote for them to take over the lease, to have a lease with you all. But to now see the state of Georgia and see some state reps not in the Atlanta delegation to try to pass legislation to make it to where county sheriffs and county chairmans can take jails from cities, how are you, how's this, what is, how do you feel about that?
Well, I, Senate Bill 7, I believe that's what you're speaking of, we definitely opposed that, and actually went over to the State Capitol during their committee meeting and spoke against that legislation. I, I think that the current relationship that we have with Fulton County Sheriff Department is working. We actually met with Sheriff Labott last week to talk about some concerns that we had. We have, I think, a good, positive relationship. They, as you heard, the numbers are at about 355 currently. We have 700 beds of, of total available for them to utilize. As we build out that process, we put together a working group, Sheriff Department as well as ACDC and the administration to make sure everyone was on the same page. And we came up with IGL agreement, which addressed administrative and operational concerns. Of course, some of our concern, one of our concerns would be to ensure that we maintain ACA accreditation. And so there are a lot of standards and outcome measures that we have to meet and had to be be in agreement with. So that legislation didn't account for any of that. So I, I think that the partnership that we have is strong enough to assist them as we, when we move forward. As the mayor mentioned, this was a humanitarian effort to provide assistance for them because they have folks sleeping on the floors and so forth. It's my understanding that situation has gotten better, but we are fully involved in this partnership and, you know, but as far as the bill, I definitely don't support it. And hopefully, you know, we can continue to move this relationship through the commitment that we've agreed to.
Yes, and, and I truly, once I, when I say you run one of the best facilities in the country, it's been noted that the Fulton County Jail and the State Department is the opposite. The federal, the DOJ, they've come in both. And I'm reading articles, I'm watching things, and I'm nervous. Makes me a little nervous about looking at Senate Bill 7 and understanding that the state, which does less than 1% of business with any minority, is now has their eyes on the city, ACDC. And they have their eyes on jails across the state, but only ACDC fits into that criteria of what they need. And so I, I saw what happened down in Union City with Mayor Vince no longer being in the jailing business. And so myself, next week, I'm watching these things, and as an elected official, I understand everybody's doing their job. I know IGAs are coming across, but I want to make sure I'm doing my part. And we're going to be, we're looking at legislation to make it to where the city, make it to where the state, that the county cannot do that. Because the DOJ say they're doing a horrible job of running the jail. I'm seeing videos that I'm sending, they're getting sent to my personal cell phone that I'm sending to PAL, Mr. Sheriff Labott. I've, I personally sent him videos of people getting stabbed in the jail asking for help. And so I want to protect us. I want to make sure that we are getting out of this lease. I understand that when you go and enter into a lease, there's an end date. And like you said, that the situation is changing. And I agree with you, the situation is changing. The state, because you ran such a good facility, they don't want to leave. They're trying to change it. We didn't ask them to do that. I don't think Fulton County asked, I hope Fulton County didn't ask them to do that. And so to make sure they don't do it, because they, they, they're deboing us to make sure they don't come try to debo us, I want to make sure we protect us. So this week, I will be dropping legislation next week to, to try to prevent that. And so thank you again for your sentiments on this. I agree with you that the lease, I agree with you, and I, I, I'm happy to hear your words that the situation is getting better because it was a humanitarian effort. Now it's time for us to make sure that we get them out of our building before they take our building. I don't want to let them take my house, take our house, and thank you again.
The Honorable Vice Chair Dustin Hillis.
Yeah, Chair, I want to thank you, Chief Dancy. Just quickly, you touched on it, but on the homepage, well, they're not numbered, but where the total bookings and ADP statistics, you touched on how the increase, but the FY ' '23 to FY '23, or FY '25 ADPs, all the bookings only went up 4% for ACDC. The ADP is up by, almost, you said doubled, so almost 100%. What, what accounts for that? You may not have a direct answer, but...
I'm just trying to get to the slide. So I could just say the, the booking numbers, some of the modifications were as a result of the signature bond, that restrictions with the House Bill. I can't recall the bill number now, but we saw some of those numbers change during that time, and I think that's part of why we have seen an increase. Of course, occasionally, APD does different types of details, and those numbers will spike off and on during certain months. But generally, I think that, that's where we could point to, which caused the biggest impact.
So that makes sense, or the, you know, the booking's not really changed too much, but because of that state bill, there's, there's certainly longer stays because they're not able to get signature bonds or charges.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Chief.
Chief, thank you for this very well-done report, and also thank you to your team for being there, for members in our community always standing in the gap. And for that, we appreciate you all. This meeting is adjourned.
Thank you.